Director's report. We have the public comment. We're going to go write public comments. I just got a short statement I did last time. Good at public speaking, but hello everyone. I just want to take a moment and address everyone present before public comments begin. I want to thank everyone here for taking the time to come to the meeting and to speak to us. But we've heard, we heard over twenty people speak at the last meeting and have received numerous letters and emails since then. It's really very helpful for us to hear directly from members of the community rather than through the rumor mill or word of mouth. Because of the numbers, we respectfully request that each commenter do their best to finish within five minutes. Both Emily and I need to leave a two camera. We don't want to miss any comments.
Sure.
Sorry? One of us, I'll probably have a timer going for five minutes. That's just so if you hear the timer go off when you're speaking, if you could, please try to wrap up your comments. Make sure everyone can speak. Let's see. And I think we're playing on recording comments. Okay, we'll transcribe that and then transcription will be available. I do have a statement regarding, prepare regarding kind of what our process and where we are, what we've learned. I can read it now or if you guys prefer, I can read it at the end.
Now.
Now? Okay, all right. And then Emily has two letters that were submitted that were requested to be read in public, so she'll probably jump in. All right. So this first is an excerpt from Tracy Cook, who's at a state level for the library, and is regarding kind of the legal issues we're dealing with. She wrote, "Today I met with John Kraska from every library. He has been working with libraries around the country about challenges to collection development policies and library collections, especially in regard to LGBTQ+ materials." Here's a summary of what he said. "Just like there are accommodations and nondiscrimination laws for those with disabilities, there are federal laws that attempt to address nondiscrimination against other groups of people. The idea behind these laws is to accommodate different abilities and groups of people. Ordering items for a library, items about a particular group of people seem to fall under Title II, Title VI, and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act. Title II is the basic premise that all people have the right to full and equal enjoyment of public goods and services. Title VI is the nondiscrimination law that covers employment and organizations that receive federal funding. It's possible that Choto County have a policy about nondiscrimination because most likely the county receives some federal funding. Title VII is a piece of law that includes sex as well as color, race, religion, and national origin. Recent court cases appear to extend the definition to include those who may be gay or fall into the LGBTQ+ population. When taken together, these laws seem to indicate that libraries should not stop ordering LGBTQ items. If a board makes that decision, it is possible that the board would be placing itself in a precarious legal position due to nondiscrimination accommodation laws. John reiterated that removing items that are already in a library's collection falls under the First Amendment and that the board should follow the proper process. If no one is requesting that items be removed, then we focus on the question about discrimination when it comes to collection development." That's the end of Tracy's email. And then, just to let everyone know where we as a board are. Right now, we still have been receiving emails almost probably daily for most of us and letters. So we're still kind of in the information gathering status. And then hopefully today will kind of be the end of that. In preparation today, we were all, we kind of all decided that we would individually brainstorm on what possible actions we could actually take, kind of along two things. Like what we could physically do up in the libraries and then what programs we can possibly offer to kind of meet the community, build trust, that sort of thing. Let's see. Independently staff has begun researching kind of the timeline of when books with LGBTQ characters or themes have been added to the collection to see if there really has been a big ramp up or if it just kind of seems that way. Let's see. They're also considering a program about how our collections policy and kind of what, so I think it's kind of on a national or state level where the whole idea of how you do your collections is established. But basically where that comes from and how we do it. All right. And then I just want to thank everyone who attended the April meeting. It was nice, it was orderly, everything went well, and I hope we have this meeting today. Thank you, thank you guys for coming. It is going to be here direct instead of from neighbors. All right. Emily, do you want to read the two?
Sure. This first letter is from Sarah Kratsner. She is from Highwood. "Dear Choto County Library Board and Community, I am writing today to express my gratitude for the Choto County Library and the valuable part of our community that it is. I know there have been concerns brought forward recently about the content that is within reach of our children when visiting the library. As a parent who has been an almost weekly visitor to the library since moving to Choto County five years ago, I can confidently say that I feel safe with my children being in our library. I have young children and I have never seen them bring a book to me from the children's section that has inappropriate content in it. A public library exists to serve as an information resource for the public. The books I choose to let my children read or not read is my responsibility. There have been and always and will always be books that cause controversy, but it is my job as a parent to monitor and decide what books I want my children reading at what age. The library is there for everyone, which means it is not their job to only allow the books that I approve of. I believe a public library is a great place for our community and our children to learn, and I take every opportunity I get to speak with my children about the new things they learn from the books they are reading. We live in a big world and our small library is a great resource to explore that world even from our spot in Montana. We have the opportunity to have discussions with our children. What those discussions look like is up to you as a parent. Our children see things every day when you take them to the store, on a walk, anywhere they go in the world. They will always have questions. The library is not exposing our children to anything that is not around us every day. How you as a parent want to address that is up to you, but it is not a library's place to censor information because you may not agree with it." Again, Sarah Kratsner from Highwood. This letter is from Dan Stewart. He also lives in Choto County. "To the Board of Directors of the Choto County Library, the staff, and all concerned individuals, an open letter. I am a parent of two children, a boy and a girl. As such, I have two driving goals. First, to protect them from anything that could harm them spiritually, mentally, or physically. Second, to give them all that they need emotionally and materially to become well-adjusted adults. In accordance with my first parental motivation, I very well understand the current concern over certain materials available in the Choto County Library. There are parents who hope to protect their children from ideas and lifestyles that are oppositional to their beliefs. Good for them. I respect their desire to save their kids from this perceived harm, seriously. Where I am having difficulty, however, is that they are attempting to define what will bring harm to children for all families, not just their own. The LGBTQ+ books that they are concerned about their children being exposed to may very well be precisely what is needed to help a struggling young person choose life when they are in a dark and lonely place. I understand that some parents want to protect their kids from LGBTQ+ ideology. I want to protect mine from a world where their only options are living a life they feel trapped in or ending it. We should let our librarians do their job, select the books that help this community grow and serve the greatest need. We should trust them to do that job. Otherwise, we are left with a world where every parent has a list of books the library has to restrict, censor, ban. But for every book that promotes the LGBTQ+ lifestyle, I'm sure there are books from authors like Dr. James Dobson that many child development specialists and psychologists consider to promote and encourage forms of child abuse. Do we all have to make lists of banned or restricted books based upon our own dogmas? Or can we trust our librarians to select and display books to serve the entire community equally? I opened this letter by talking about protecting our children from harm, but it is clear to me that we lack a shared definition of that harm. So I propose a potential solution. Oddly, it is the solution that our country has relied upon for its entire history but is evergreen. Each parent of each child teaches their own children what is acceptable and what is not. Teach them that the library is a place of many wonderful ideas and a few evil ones from each of our perspectives and that we must all learn the differences to grow into a healthy, functioning adult. Trying to shield our youth from viewpoints we don't like only leaves them unprepared for life in a world where we all think and believe differently. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dan Stewart."
Does anyone like to start?
So I just, my name is Viddy Bondwell, I'm from Highwood. I just want to reiterate the fact that I am not in favor of banning books, but I am very concerned about the books that are in our library that our kids can see, our youth. But before, I have a couple of them here. These ones are in the Forbidden Library, some are in the Big Family Library as well. I just want to read a couple passages. Before that, I just want to ask the board or whoever is in charge of the social media accounts. I'm still a little confused as to why there's two Instagram accounts for the Choto County Library. And can I ask a question to get answers right now?
Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Legally, we don't respond. This is our time to listen, but we will put that on our action items.
And I know last, at the last board meeting, it was stated that one of the social media accounts was a personal account. Those packets that we handed out for you, I just hope that you can see the confusion where the Forbidden To Be Read list is the one in question that's supposedly a personal account. But before the board meeting last, last month, the pronouns were they/them on that personal account. A week before the board meeting, the pronouns were changed to she/her on that personal account. So I'm confused at how that was a personal account up until it was changed. The pronouns were changed. The first book I want to, I don't even want to read from this book. It's mostly pictures. I, you guys have one copy of some of the pictures that are in this book. I think the pictures themselves encourage gender dysphoria. I don't know if anybody, if you have kids who don't look, but I can show you some of the pictures. This is a girl going into menarche and this is a picture of how she views herself.
Whitney, can we have the name of the book and author?
Oh yeah, sorry. The name of the book is Gender Queer: A Memoir by Maya Koebe. I don't know how to say the last name. K-O-B-A-B-E. Here's another picture. And these are picture books, so you don't even have to be old enough to read if this book is misplaced in the library. Here's another book or another picture in the book about her view with her gender dysphoria. And I think anybody who is confused, who reads this book, is going to be encouraged to look at this and think, maybe that's how I should be feeling. That's just my opinion. Here's another book or another picture in the book. So without reading that book, those are my concerns about gender queer. Another book that I'm concerned about is called Thirteen Reasons Why, a novel by Jay Asher. I won't go into this book, but there's a lot of books that's about romanticizing suicide and some of the reasons that our youth might commit suicide, but I'll just read a short little quote so that I have time to read the other one. First page. Hello, boys and girls. Hannah Baker here. This is a recording that the girl that committed suicide left. Live and in stereo. And the author says, "I don't believe it." Hannah, "No return engagements, no encore, and this time absolutely no requests." Author, "No, I can't believe it. Hannah Baker killed herself." Hannah Baker. "I hope you're ready because I'm about to tell you the story of my life, more specifically why my life ended. And if you're listening to these tapes, you're one of the reasons why." Wanted to read into that book. This one's going to be hard for me to read. It's going to be hard for you to hear. I ask if you have kids that maybe might want, not want them in here right now for this, so. This is, it's called The Blue-Eyed Eye. It's a novel by Toni Morrison. It's about a young, this passage is about a young black girl and her father. So, and this is written from the father's point of view right now. "So it was on a Saturday afternoon in the thin light of spring. He staggered home reeling drunk and saw his daughter in the kitchen. She was washing dishes. Okay? Her small back hunched over the sink. Charlie saw her dimly, could not tell what she, what he saw or what he felt." I'm just going to kind of skip through here since that was a timer. "She was a child unburdened. Why wasn't she happy? He wanted to break her neck, but tenderly. What could he do for her ever? What could he say to her? What could a burned-out black man say to the hunched back of his eleven-year-old daughter? How dare she love him? Hadn't she had any sense at all? What was he supposed to do about that? Return it? What could his heavy arms and befuddled brain accomplish that would earn his own respect? That would in turn allow him to accept her love? The tenderness welled up in him on skipping down. He sank to his knees, his eyes on the foot of his daughter. Crawling on all fours toward her, he raised his hand and caught the foot in an upward stroke. Akola, the daughter, lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. Charlie raised his other hand to her hips to save her from falling. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg. His mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat was better than Pauline's easy laughter at Ben. That's the mother. Surrounding all of his lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to fuck her tenderly, but the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, like a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat, like the rapid loss of air from a surface balloon." And then it kind of just goes on from there, but I just, I'm concerned that these are the kind of books that are in the young adult section or the youth section. I mean, young adult is what, ages twelve to eighteen? So don't be on the book, but keep it out of the hands of our kids. Thank you.
These are not my words. These are, this is from a speech that Will Wheaton gave in March at the Southern Kentucky Book Festival. And I believe they really capture what ninety-nine percent of us in Choto County, how we feel about our library and the materials in our library. So these are not my words. The credit goes to Will Wheaton.
Can you say, introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Debbie Evans. He says, "Recently I saw a screen capture of a tweet from 2022 that read, 'Today, a woman with developmental disabilities came into the library and said she was lost. She didn't know her address, but her phone number was in her pocket on a piece of paper with Elmo on it. She kept saying, 'The library is a safe place.' We called and her guardian came right over. Apparently, this happens pretty regularly. They even stayed long enough for her to check out some new books and Sesame Street DVDs. The library is a safe place indeed.'" So he's quoting that from a Twitter handle. "That hit me so hard, right in my heart. If the library wasn't there, where would she go? Where would I have gone? Where will kids and teens and marginalized adults go? The people who wrote Senate Bill 150 have ideological partners all over this country, and if they have their way, all the safe places will be taken away, including our public libraries. The library is a safe place. Why libraries? Because the library is so much more than a building with lots of books, internet access, three D printers, D and D programs for kids, and all the other things. The library represents and offers equal access for everyone to all those things, not just the wealthy, not just the privileged, not just the in-group. It is a safe place for everyone to be curious, to find inspiration, to sit in the stacks as far away from the door in the world as possible and just quietly exist for a minute. Don't you love the way those books smell? The public library is a safe place for us, whether we are a kid who feels invisible, a woman who is lost, or a New York Times bestselling author who has the privilege of sharing their story with you. And that scares the pants off the authoritarians. The greatest threat to their fragile grip on power is equal access to education, information, and opportunity. So libraries and librarians scare them to death. Whenever someone tries to ban a book, they are telling on themselves. They are confessing, but they are weak, afraid, and out of control. They are telling us that when we read these books, we will lose whatever control and authority they have. Authoritarians will try to control every aspect of your life because they feel so out of control in theirs. Ask me how I know. So, read banned books, challenge book bans, donate banned books. Take your kids to the library and encourage them to drink in as much knowledge, inspiration, and entertainment as possible. Support and reinforce their desire to learn and expand their world because we're all going to be old people in it. And after the last few years of this, I want the world to have more books and fewer fascists in it." This is only a part of the speech. You can find the complete speech online and I can give you a link if you need it later. Thank you.
I'm just going to read as it's easier for me. My name is Michelle Danhler and I'm a co-writer of the Protect Our Choto County Kids petition. I'm a certified K-12 music teacher, a private music teacher, a farmer's wife, and homeschool mom of three. I love the library and I'm in full support of library staff. You may find that shocking because I believe it is in our human nature that if someone disagrees with you, then they must not like you. I hope to contradict that because I truly care for the library and its staff and I respect their work. I want to help facilitate better communication, honesty, and a warmer environment where everyone can feel safe to express their opinion. I have been an avid library user since my oldest child was four or five. In fact, I had my mother-in-law sew me an extra-large library bay just so I could check out as many books as my bay could carry. My children and I love to read together, to bond over a good story and talk about our favorite and least favorite characters and what the characters learned and how it applies to our lives. And we have read many good books from our local Choto County library. The past two years or so, I started to get burned out, though. I felt like I had read through most of the good ones and many of the new ones seemed to just be next. More and more books were coming in that seemed geared towards a child's entertainment, but not necessarily their intelligence. I call these books junk food books. Some refer to these books as twaddle. They are books that are poorly written, as if generated straight out of a robot computer. They have dumbed-down language, they have crass or crude humor, and they lack a quality storyline. There seem to be more and more of these books, as well as LGBTQ+ books, in our libraries. I wrote it off for a while, thinking that it was just a sign of the times, but my library usage dropped. And the next time I'd go, I'd see more LGBTQ books and twaddle, and I had to explain to my kids that I did not want them checking out Captain Underpants nor have them look at labeled rainbow books. It was then that I started to feel uncomfortable and concerned for my kids. It was in the past month or so that I came to understand many other moms were having the same feelings toward the library over the past couple years, and I felt convicted that I needed to do something. I was slowly learning that I could have a say in what was in our library, being those were my tax dollars as well. It seemed evident to me that there had to be a policy made that the community could rest assured that the library would meet the needs of its local patrons and secure a safe place for our kids. Any potential for explicit content needed addressed before it did creep into our local libraries. And this is where the circulation of the petition seemed to be skewed by people who weren't actually reading the petition but spreading word of mouth that it was a book banning petition or an anti-Emily petition, and these accusations are untrue. My goal of the petition was to bring awareness to the community about the array of LGBTQ+ material being implemented in our local libraries and to shine light on the fact that the American Library Association and their refusal to filter any content for any age is concerning. There is explicit material readily available for our teens and parents must be aware of it. For an example, I have a book that I can read. It's called Lawn Boy, and I'll just read a brief part of it. "What if I told you I touched another guy's dick?" I said. Nick waved me off and turned his attention back to his beer. "What if I told you I sucked it? Will you please just shut up already? I'm dead serious, Nick." "Well, I'd say you were a fag." "I was ten years old, but it's true. I put Doug Gobbles' dick in my mouth." "The real estate guy?" "Yep." Nick looked around frantically. "What the fuck are you talking about, Michael?" "I was in fourth grade, it was no big deal." Cringing, Nick held his hands out in front of him in a yaled gesture. "Stop. He sucked mine, too." Our community must know what they are expected, know that they are expected to hold the library accountable for what content is available, and they must have a say. The goal of the petition was also to demonstrate to the library staff the desires of a large base of its tax-paying patrons. I realize there are LGBTQ patrons in our community. However, catering in excess to their literary needs and further hosting a pride month seems unfair to the rest of us patrons who would like to protect our younger kids and teenagers from these ideologies. I have the petition signed. It's ongoing. We have about two hundred signatures to date, and I will give those to the board. Lastly, but not least, I have been greatly disappointed with the availability of certain books for my kids' homeschool education. A group of us moms have consolidated a large list of books we would love to see in our library, and I will pass those on. These books are quality, thought-provoking, character-building books with excellent use of language and art that promote intelligence in our kids. I also think the ability to get books from Highwood's library needs addressed. Highwood has more educational books than any other branch, and I would like to see the issues of Highwood loaning out their books resolved, or else I would like to see duplicates of these books bought with our taxpayer money for the other branches to loan out. I also have a book list. Would you like them now?
This is the list. Okay. These are pictures. And this is, the signature's to date.
Okay.
As of the last six days.
Okay.
And counting.
Thank you. Do you have the book list?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think so. Thank you. Next.
It seems as if...
Don't forget to introduce yourself.
Lori Reddick, first name. Born and raised. It seems as though, as is to be expected in this larger group, that we have several differing complaints. One is sexual explicitness. One is LGBTQ+. One is not those but having books that are easy for the young children to get, which one of the letters indicated. And it's been my experience in the kids' section, the young kids' section, that's just not an issue, but I don't know everything. Also, junk books. You just go on Amazon, you find that we're in an era where people can self-publish any old junk book. I agree. Toni Morrison, I'd be surprised if she's in the young kids. Maybe she is for sure, but she's an adult writer. And then what I'm thinking is, it's so nice to maybe live in a life where you haven't known of or experienced adult incest or rape, or maybe you don't pay attention to the news that tells about the soccer star young kid whose parents are thrilled when he gets taken notice by this coach that's excellent and he goes to these camps and the coach seduces him as a young age and he ends up dead with my self-infliction. Those things happen so, so often. I think it would be a comfort for a kid to know there were others who were suffering from adults who take advantage of their young bodies and their young innocence. I guess that's all I can say. There's just a lot of things I agree with and there's a lot of things I think we need to understand are real. and there's a lot of things I think we need to understand are real. And, and people who are in the middle of a dark, dark place and helplessness. Everything, everything everyone said, I, I, I understand. Just, it's, it's, it's big. It's not, it's not little. And someone pick up for me here because that's, that's what I can say right now.
Hi, actually, Lori, I prepared some comments. Hi, Lori.
My name's Tim Wood. I, I'm not from here. I downed living in Fort Bend since last July, but I'm from everywhere. My dad was military, so I guess I stuck with me. In part, I'm here on my own behalf. In part, I'm here as pastor of the Two Methodist Churches, the one here in the one in Highwood. They hired me. Don't do politics. And they said, "We want you to go down and talk." Part of what I thought should be addressed is, I saw the transcript from last time I talked to people, and I saw lots of rumors, lots I heard my kids, and all I could think of is, we, we have a church here in town that pastors are separated recently. I had three or four people come to me, and none of the stories agreed. And folks will take the stories for what they are. They won't go back to the source. And we got a lot of people who were making statements without coming to actually seeing what's there. So on that, I appreciate the folks who actually did take a look in the collection. Some other comments I was going to say, I, I realized it was wrong relative, that what Lori said, I was actually having similar thoughts rattle around in my head. And I will give two examples that speak exactly to what she said and reply to some of the comments. The, the first one's this morning. I had breakfast with an eighty-five-year-old gentleman, and the issue that both these folks raised of incest, one of them raised, that's what he's wrestling with on part of his wife. She's never gotten over that, and I don't think she had the chance to be exposed to something and said, "This is not just you. This is not just what you are going through. You may be going through this, but it's not what you have done wrong." She will never recover from that because she never heard that growing up. She thought it was just her. Uh, the other thing that came to mind responds to how we've got people talking about books ending up accidentally in the wrong place, what kids may be exposed to if they don't have a parent with them. And all I can remember is that when we were over in Bonner's Ferry, over in the Panhandle of Idaho, my wife drove a bus, school bus, and one day on the elementary run, she came home after, she said, "I, I had to report a kid. The kid had a handgun in their bag, an elementary school kid." If my wife hadn't caught this child, that wouldn't have just been a book that would have been dangerous. That could have potentially been somebody's wife. We don't want these things to happen, but we also have to realize it's, there are these things in life that do happen, and it takes coming into the library with your children. It takes being in conversation with the staff at the library. It takes being part of the community to deal with these things, navigate together as a community. It's not just about banning everything we can and hoping to protect our kids from the world as it really is. Thank you.
Could I, oh, sorry. Would you mind if I just added, uh, did, um, because the LGBTQ, um, I wanted to ask a little more about that. I would just ask ourselves, well, okay, I know of someone more than someone. I know several people, but one especially, um, my husband knew. A young man who was gay, but his parents said, "No, you're not." He said, "I, I, you know, can I bring home my love at, at college for Thanksgiving? No, you may not." He got AIDS. His loved one came and took care of him till he died, and from that, his mother and father's heart was broken open to gay people. Based on the dedication of his partner. And, um, but, so I would ask us, it's very uncomfortable, but I would ask ourselves, why are we zeroing in on this? There are books like Toni Morrison's books, novels that have, that have been around for hundreds of years that deal with incest, adultery, abortion, divorce, which is a big no-no in the Bible. It's, I know someone very well who, at age fourteen, was a really, really good reader. Maybe she was thirteen. When she got a book at the library, which I didn't realize, but it's full of incestual stuff, and, and she turned out fine, but you're not going to, you're not going to... I'm getting off track. So, just ask ourselves, why are we zeroing in on this LGBTQ thing? Especially, you can't deny, you can't deny, but you'll find out, your heart will be broken open to LGBTQ people because your loved one, your, your daughter's best friend, your whatever will be along the way. It doesn't do any good to say, "No, this isn't okay. This doesn't exist." Jesus loves, and you don't have to be as gentle as that, but yes, we have to be our own children's guardians.
I'm going to riff off of Lori. I promise I will not stand up again.
I won't either.
And what, and I'm going to thank Lori because she reminded a part I, I meant to say that I didn't say. So you spoke to people in our community who are LGBTQ. Before I came here, my senior pastor, I would, I was an associate, and again, my name's Tim Wood. I would see him doing this before service, deep in prayer and wrestling with something, and it turned out, even though he had two kids approaching adulthood, he was finally realizing he was trans. And he was literally praying to God, because we do that in the Catholic Church, we believe in the prayer. "God, deliver me from this," and it wasn't happening. He realized this was part of who he was. The part I was going to say that was strange for me is, I went back and pulled some numbers. When we talk of just people who are intersex, they are born neither male nor female, possibly both. That, that's been known since the Babylonian era. That's always been part of who we are as humans. And statistically, we have multiple people in this that narrow county, here in this county, in this county, being served by this library. When we talk about this larger group of people who are LGBTQ, it's quite a few people. I am looking for them. There, I've come to know quite a few here. And we speak as if there's this conspiracy that these guys are the enemy, but they're our neighbors, they're our community. And as Lori said, God loves them just as much as God loves us. And this library is part of how we can love them, recognize them, let them feel seen, and help them to grow up and help the adults. And with that, I will yield.
Hey, I'm Steve Nelson, here in Fort Bend, and this goes back to the letter that I wrote before. This is not about book banning. This is about, um, now I got off track. Let me sit down and think about what I had to say. Let me sit down. I'll, I'll get back to it. I just got off the page for a second.
Yeah, I'm Kirsten Brady. I'm from Highwood. And, um, yeah, I agree with a lot of things that people are saying. As a parent, I realize that there's going to be a day when my kids go out into the world and I have zero control over what they do. Right now, when they are young, I do have control. I take great strides to make sure that the shows they are watching on TV are appropriate, age-appropriate. They're not allowed on the internet. Um, you know, right now, I do have some control. And as they get older and older and older, I lose more and more and more control. So right now, when they are young, this is my time to show them God's love, show them how God wants them to live. If they choose someday not to live that way, you know, that is their choice. Going into the library, I feel like I do not want to ban books. I don't want to do that. But if there is a separate section for LGBT that I know that I don't want my kids to go into, then I will be a lot more willing to take my kids to the library, knowing that. If I can take them into the children's room, knowing that there won't be a print-and-print book on display, then I will gladly take them to the library. And they're knowing that there is a separate section for books that I would not want them to read right now, so. I also want to thank you guys for the service you do. I mean, I know that there's a lot of good things that come out of the library, and we do appreciate the resources that the library has, so thank you very much.
You know, I'm Ann Bach, and, um, I taught high school English for thirty-three years in Great Falls. And, uh, I use the library really, really a lot. And I have, uh, uh, my son, I have only one son, and he and, of course, my grandchildren live in California. And one day, I was talking to my grandson when he was either, I can't remember, was he in preschool or elementary school? But he was very young, and, um, we were talking about chaperones. He liked it when his mother chaperoned him when he went on special events. And I said, "Well, do dads ever chaperone the kids?" And he said, "Oh, yes. Look, both of Luke's dads chaperone us sometimes." And was he shocked? No. If anybody was shocked, it was me. Because I am from a generation where we didn't talk about two dads or two mommies because those poor people had to stay hidden. And I thought, here he is, this little kid, and he accepts this. He doesn't think it's horrible. When the child is little, you can talk to him and simply say something like, you know, "Sometimes my two ladies get married, and sometimes two men get married." And they won't think it's a big deal. It's you and me who get all upset about this stuff like that because we grew up in a society where these people had to hide in the closet. And even with the sex in the books.